Thank you all for your patience as we continue to wrestle with various matters in executive session about which somebody will say something, I assume, tonight beyond what I'm saying right now. Welcome, welcome. Good to see everybody here. We have a pretty full agenda. We have two sets of minutes to review, August 20th and September 3rd. Can we do them together or do we need to do them one at a time?
I think we'll be approved of.
A second.
All right. Is there anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you. Lisa, you want to go to the announcements?
Yes.
Please.
I wanted to announce that the supervisors had an executive session this evening at 6:00 PM to discuss matters of real estate. They also had a form of executive session via email to discuss matters of real estate I don't know if all of you know, but we've been working on a regional police study along with London Grove, New Garden Township, and the Borough of Kennet Square. That study is completed. It wasn't supposed to be completed until the end of October, but it's completed. We don't have the study yet. On October 15th, all of the townships will be meeting privately, it is not a public meeting, to review the study. And then, once each township has the study, then we can present it to the public. The automatic gate at the maintenance garage was installed and is working properly for the most part. We had an issue with it. One day it was jammed and wouldn't open, but it is working properly. It's opening at 5:30 in the morning and closing at 8:00 at night. I wanted to get an update on Stevens Gardens, that's over on Route 52. I've talked about that just about every meeting. We're trying to get the property cleaned up. We recently filed nine citations against the property for the cleanup. We did go to court for those citations and we won eight out of nine. So hopefully, the remainder of the property will get cleaned up very soon. At the October 15th public meeting, Loma Gardens, Paul Redman, the director, will be giving a presentation to the public to talk about their community outreach program. He will be first on the agenda at that meeting. And I wanted to announce that the planning commission will be having a presentation of their land use map on October 28th at 7:00 PM. That is a public meeting. It'll be in this room. Everybody's invited. And the last thing I just wanted to announce is that we all attended Tag Lumber's grand opening, which was a great event. They had a ceremony and raising of the flags and the supervisors were there. And I'm sure a lot of you know, they had week-long lunches, breakfast and lunches for the public. You didn't know?
Just one day.
They had it all week. It was a very nice event. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you for the manager's report.
Chief McCarthy is not here?
Yeah, just left.
Oh, okay. Then I'll read his report. During the month of August 2014, there were 164 incidents handled with the state police. An unfortunate accident occurred in Nixon Park on August 28th when a 17-year-old student drowned while trying to retrieve a soccer ball from one of the ponds. These ponds were the former reservoirs of the borough's waterworks. Despite the valiant efforts of the Kennet and Loma Fire Company's underwater recovery teams and emergency medical units, the boy was pronounced dead at Genersville Regional Hospital. The investigation into the accident was conducted jointly by the township police, the Kennet Borough Police, and the Chester County Coroner's Office. The death has been ruled accidental. Burglaries are continuing to occur in southern Chester County. There were two in the township this past month. Residents are urged to secure their houses, make them look occupied at all times, and use alarms if they have a security system. Unlocked cars in driveways have also been entered during the night. The suspects are taking any loose change in small valuables left in the cars. The other thing that's not on here that I know Chief McCarthy was going to mention is that in other townships...
I was afraid it was just in time to give that report.
Do you want to finish your report?
Welcome back.
Where are you?
I finished after the burglaries paragraph. I was getting ready to say about the burglaries in surrounding townships. I was getting ready to add that in.
Okay, I apologize, but there's been a few things going on tonight. Don't need to be. But we're at the police department, continuing to root traffic concerns.
Right.
Well, the burglaries, besides the burglaries, we've had very few, but through southern end of Chester County, that's not been the case. Last week, there was an armed burglary, which is technically considered an armed robbery, in Elk Township, which is near Newark, Delaware, right at the state line. It's unusual burglary. What happened there, there were two at the same time, two different houses. And when one of the resident's father went to see what was going on, because he saw this van in the driveway, the man came out behind the tool shed, pointed the gun at it, and ordered him on the ground. For somebody, he turned and fled. But this is different than what burglaries normally are. Burglaries, to me, are generally cowards. What happens with the few that we've had here is, they knock on the front door, they don't get an answer, they run around and kick the back door in, they go upstairs to the bedrooms, take the jewelry and flee. That's been our experience with the burglaries we've had here. So this is a little different. I recommend that somebody knocks on the door and they answer it, because they want to know if somebody's home or not. In the second burglary in Elk Township, there was somebody in the house on the second floor, and she didn't answer him. So it's kind of different. But I hope we don't have that type of problem here. But in the other things the police department did, we continued to review traffic concerns at several intersections in the townships. They were discussed with the public safety meeting. And the committee's reports were discussed at the board of supervisors' meeting last month. They were sent to the traffic engineer. He's reviewed, he agreed with most of the recommendations, and they're going to be implemented as soon as...now it has to come back to the board of supervisors. There has to be an ordinance passed, and after the ordinance is passed, then we can put these improvements into place. Identity theft scans haven't occurred through the area. Generally, their caller represents himself as an agent of the IRS and demands to verify all your information so that he can tell you about the charges against you. He says if you do not provide any information, you will face a substantial fine. So again, we do not provide any caller with any information at all, and the IRS always works in paper. You get that famous letter from the IRS. But as you get a little older and your mind starts to slip, you panic, and some of our elderly residents have given the information out, which we had to aid in getting that screen out as quickly as we can. We continue to urge the residents to report suspicious activities and vehicles. These things need to be reported, and you report to the 911, because in Chester County, all calls go to 911. There is a seven-digit number for those who just have a bad feeling about 911, we've been giving that number out. But you may just see somebody, and you, it may not be suspicious, might be unusual, but to get that information to us, that may be one piece of the puzzle in resolving these burglaries. One other thing is the aggressive driving details. They've been completed this month. This is one grant that we've had to provide hours to the police department to just do aggressive driving. And it's been quite successful. I think we're up to a couple hundred traffic arrests for aggressive driving, and that's where I just went, because Officer Knoll had stopped a car for aggressive driving. We sometimes overlap. And the occupant in the passenger had outstanding warrants, so that tied him up. At the same time, it kind of always comes that way. There was an off-duty Wilmington police officer following another erratic driver northbound 82 towards the borough. Borough police did stop him. They provided the information for us, and the off-duty Wilmington police naturally is going to testify for us, but I needed to go and see who's driving this car, so I could say, yes, that's the person behind the wheel.
What's aggressive driving?
Reckless.
I want to know, so I don't do it.
He's the guy, no turn signals, goes from right lane to left lane, swerves behind you, or he swerves back and forth, blows the horn when you're moving a little slower than he wants you to, will pass you on the shoulder. I mean, there's all kinds of things, which is generally something that is intended, and I think you will notice it when you see it. But with cell phones, there have been quite a few reported, not only to us, but to police officers in the area, because there was another one coming over, and one of the indoor departments while I was listening to this. But sometimes, there was an accident last Friday where a woman, she wasn't paying attention, she swerved into the side of the car. She wants to blame him and says that was aggressive driving, he intentionally ran into her. Only problem is, the right front corner of his car has no damage. You can see where the...it was what we call a sideswipe accident, so that's been a phone call multiple times this week. She just...so, an already registered reporter to crime through 911. Chester County goes all through 911. We're going to talk about this in our newsletter. Voicemails left upstairs. I'm glad to talk to anybody. I don't come into the station that much, I see the boss when I need to. Kind of same road, but when I do come in, five or six voicemails concerning something that happened last night that should have been immediately reported, because we're not working, it's transferred to the state police. And that's important that that happens, because if you leave the voicemail, it sits there and goes nowhere. So I'm just encouraging residents, every chance I get, not to leave a voicemail, unless it's something you need information for, or something that reoccurs in your neighborhood, I'll take those calls. Or if something the state police say, "We can't help you, it's an ordinance violation, you got to get back to the county police." So that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, I think there is a question.
I have a question, and this is just a question about the regional process. Is there an attempt to track the burglaries and other incidences on a geographic basis?
It's...
And I don't expect an explicit answer, just a general.
No, in general...
I understand it might be confidential.
Well, it is and it isn't. Generally, what we do is pinpoint the accidents or the burglaries to the township and crime in general. New Garden's been doing that, but we have a meeting, all the departments in the southern end of the county have a quarterly meeting with the state police, or if it's something like this, we'll have that meeting even sooner.
Is that across the state lines as well?
Well, we do more with the Newcastle County Police. We had an incident, knocked some forms just the other night with juveniles who didn't really warn them, they were doing a few other things. Since they're juveniles, they can be released to somebody. So they were released to mom and took them back into Newcastle County, but they were identified in an incident that night in Delaware, so that worked out very well. But yes, Newcastle County, really in our area, we talk about crime. We don't really have a lot of crime in terms of high crime body, and the same with Newcastle County. On the Delaware side of the line, they don't have a whole lot either than that. And that changes your patrol tactics.
Right.
So you can put the car where you need it most. But in that we've had these increased burglaries, and the other problem is unlocked cars in the garage and in the driveway have been gone through, and they're looking for change or dollars or something like that. They're not even taking laptops, they're laying on the seats. They're just taking anything that might be there. If you had your pearl necklace on the mirror, I wouldn't do that either if that happened. So they just go through the cars, just take what they can take. That's Newcastle, and that's an...
Thank you.
Chief.
Yes, one more question.
Two more, actually.
Okay. Kaiser, I want to commend the police department for the new reporting that they have. First time I've seen it going on the website. I do have some questions on it, if that's appropriate at this time. One suggestion, the monthly stats that you have on patrol hours, you have a .5, you know, in several cases, I'd suggest that you round it up. That's easier than to read the report as far as, you know, keeping things in columns. Okay. And also, I have a question. When you say "traffic arrest" or "criminal arrest," I guess that means it's the ARST, does that stand for arrest?
Yes.
And what is...what's your definition of an arrest? Does that mean that you detain somebody?
No, it's a charge.
So that's a charge?
It's just a charge.
Okay.
So you can be charged with reckless driving, but there are three levels of reckless driving, depending on which one you're charged with. It's still an arrest, no matter how we look at it.
Okay. It's a little...for someone who's not in law enforcement, arrest has a different definition. So I was wondering if you might want to clarify that on the report, because, you know, we civilians, when I see arrest anyway, speaking for myself...
We'll look at it, but I don't... We're taking the numbers off of our reporting system, and we're trying to stay on the road as much as we can, so we don't want to spend a lot of time...it's only the reporting system that way, we just leave it, but I'll break it down.
Well, I understand, I understand, Chief. I'm a citizen who is going to make comments on whether we should combine, you know, police departments, so it's nice to have some idea of what our police department is doing and some idea what their police department is doing. Does it make sense to combine or not? So from a civilian standpoint, I think it makes a lot of sense to really communicate on my level or...
I'll be glad to sit down and talk to you anytime you want me to.
Thank you.
Can I understand your question? When you're making the distinction about arrest, are you trying to find a distinction between taking somebody in handcuffs and taking them off to the husskell?
Correct.
As opposed to giving him a citation?
Correct.
Both of those are arrests. And so, to be able to...what I would suggest, as you read through it, is those things that would be dealing with property damage, burglaries, robberies, other kinds of serious criminal behavior, as opposed to those things which would be criminal, quasi-criminal. Traffic violations are criminal, but they are not the same as criminal-criminal, which is a real artful way of saying it. You can read it and see which ones would have an arrest component, whether they have to go in front of a magistrate right away or not. But to...I'll let the chief go into the details of it, but there is a county-wide reporting system. The report that you're referring to comes out of that system. It is defined by the software that creates it and doesn't make the distinction that you're asking for. That distinction is implicit to those that use that system. And so, what you're asking for is a report that isn't available, I don't believe. Having said all that, Chief, do you want to correct me?
No, you're absolutely right. What we're trying to show you and listing that information on the website is that we're out there doing something. And that's, you know, that's basically it.
Chief, is there a way to break it down by summary offenses, misdemeanors, and felonies?
There is on the Uniform Crime Report that I do not believe is public.
Okay. Enough said.
Okay, thank you. So moving on, you also have on the stats a dollar amount as far as district court is concerned for a number of different items. What exactly is that?
That's the total amount of fines that are assessed to anybody when the charges are filed, and a portion of that goes to the township.
So that's a total amount. So if you're looking at, let's say, for instance, July, you know, going across, and there are X number of arrests, and then there's a dollar amount, they're coordinated?
No. It can be a $25 fine for going to a stop sign, of which the township gets $12.50, or it could be a $5,000 fine for overweight truck, or other truck violations.
So the amount on there is what the township gets, or the amount on there is the total?
It's the total.
So if I look at June, you know, I've got traffic arrests alone, or 75, and the amount of proceeds is 1,261, so that comes out to about $17 per arrest.
No. I can talk to you anytime about this, because we're holding up the meeting.
No, we're not holding up the meeting unless the county supervisor says we are.
It could be...
You know, then I'll sit down.
It could be that amount that comes from the district court each month is what is paid. Some of those, for example, the two arrests tonight are from Florence, something issued in February, they're just going to get paid in September. So you'll see that on the next report.
So is it meaningful to have that amount on there?
Yes. It shows what proceeds the county, the township is eventually going to get. It's what most police departments report in its inquiries, that's why it's on there.
Is there anything else we can answer for, Your Honor?
Yes. Liquor laws. I mean, I went through the report, and, you know, I had some questions, I'm sure you, you know...
Nobody's questioned that. What's your next question, sir?
So liquor laws. To date, there are two instances where liquor laws were violated, correct?
Correct.
I mean, that's what I'm reading on the report. So what's an example of a liquor law being violated?
Underage drinking.
Okay, so there were two. So and then there is, also to date, drugs or narcotics, there are nine. What's an example of that?
It could be a number of things. It's a violation of the Drug Enforcement Act. Could be a traffic stop resulted in marijuana being found in the car. It could be reported to suspicious person, and the search for our own protection could result in drugs of some type. It could be that we have information that somebody is transporting drugs, and we stop them as a result of that information. It could be a number of things.
So there are quite a bit more, from what I see, drug and narcotics instances that are reportable than there are liquor instances that are reportable.
Correct.
Okay. Loan response is a lot, you know, 200 to date?
Correct.
Of those, how many are false alarms?
How many are what?
False alarms.
I would say the 200, because if it's not a false alarm, it'll result in a burger charge, so it won't be carried as a false alarm.
So I don't understand what you just said.
Okay. If you respond to an alarm...
Right.
If you get there and the house is broken into...
Right.
That's not an alarm.
Correct.
That's an actual crime.
Okay. So 200 are false alarms?
Some are fire department alarms, and some of them are smoke rather than fire.
But they're alarms that you have to respond to?
That's correct.
Correct. So there are a lot of...quite a bit of response time is being spent on false alarms. I make a suggestion to the board to consider that the township may want to live a fine when there's false alarms. It does seem fine not to collect money as much as it is to prevent false alarms. A lot of times, if there's a penalty for false alarms, people are a little more careful about, you know, an automatic machine that goes on, sends off an alarm, and how many times does that happen in one month for one person?
There is provision for that already.
Yes.
Thank you, Joey, that was your suggestion.
Okay. And that's...and you're happy with that? You're happy with how the provision's working against the 200 false alarms?
Sure.
You have any oversight on that?
Sure.
And, yeah, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your interest.
This is just a quick... That's a lie. Yeah, but I have a big pile of topsoil the Kennet Township says can't leave my site, so...and it's in front of my house. Couple of times I've reported cars, and I bravely or stupidly, depending on your perspective, I go up when I see it at night and I get their license plate. So a few times I've reported that to 911, and my statement is, "I don't want to arrest anybody, I just want these kids to stop either passing off drugs or leaving used rubbers in my driveway and so forth." I never hear anything back. Does that get to you?
It hasn't gotten to me until you told me that, but it could have gotten to Officer Knoll. And I just had one last night, a separate incident, they gave you the tag number on that incident.
So I should call you?
Yes, you can call me. I like...
Okay, because 911, I think, just says, "Oh..."
No.
Just ignore her.
911 does everything...911 does nothing other than take that call off and transfer. So if it goes to us, when we're working, you're going to get a response. If it goes to the state police, that's a busy state police barracks, and they're doing things according to priority, they will actually want to...
Sure, we'll follow up.
But they will get it down there, and by the time they get back to you, it could be three hours later. So they'll say, "Okay, whatever." That's what generally will happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Chief, I've observed your participation on the township for quite a number of years, and I think you're doing an excellent job, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It means a lot.
Thank you. Me too.
Should we clap?
All right, that gets us through police summaries, so now we're down to old business. Do we have a...let's see, we have the firearms ordinance as amended is back before the board. Do we have a motion that it be adopted?
No.
Authorize, advertise.
Just to authorize to advertise it.
So...
Second.
Okay. Shall we open it to discussion? And thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, in reading the ordinance, I see that it says it doesn't apply to air rifles. Do we have anything that applies to air rifles, or it just doesn't apply to air rifles? A firearm does not apply to air rifles. I understand it doesn't, I understand what a firearm is. But do we have anything as far as regulations of air rifles, or that's just whatever?
As far as I'm aware, there isn't. Certainly, I know that this ordinance does not address air rifles or projectiles fired by strings...
Okay.
Otherwise known as bows and southern arrows. Beyond that, I don't know if there's any ordinances that address those.
That's exactly what the Pennsylvania State Law addresses as well, so there's...to extend past the Pennsylvania state law would create an issue, right?
Well, we're only dealing here with township...
Correct.
Ordinance.
Correct.
I'm sure that there are ordinances at the state level that would address those kinds of questions, I believe. I absolutely do not know as an absolute fact, but I believe that I'd be surprised if state ordinance didn't address those things.
18, but am I correct in saying that they're trying to stay within the definitions of firearms as stated within the Pennsylvania law?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Correct. 18 PA, Section 6304...18, which is the crimes code, Section 6304 relates to the sale and use of air rifles. It's exempted from the definition of firearm for the purpose of this ordinance because it's exempted from the definition of firearms in the state uniform firearm statute.
Is there any other discussion on this amendment to the ordinance? Hearing none, call for the vote. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay, nor am I. So this passes unanimously as well.
So it'll be on the agenda for next month for adoption?
It'll be two weeks or one month?
Actually, we'll do it October 1st.
I guess I misunderstood completely. Clarification, October 1st?
Our...yes.
Next meeting.
Your work session.
Okay.
Public meeting there.
Correct.
Okay. Do you want to do it then, or do you want to do it at the regular meeting?
We can do it that. This has been going on quite a while.
My suggestion is, if you have...
My suggestion is if you have business to take care of, your October first meeting is a public meeting, and I don't think there's any reason to, to wait. Okay.
Okay. That's what we'll do.
Would you like to introduce the subject of intersection traffic study recommendations? What are we doing with that?
At our last meeting, we discussed a memo from the safety committee recommending four-way stops at three intersections as suggested by Chief McCarthy. And this also relates to a two thousand nine traffic study that was done by Panoni and Associates. At that meeting, the supervisors decided to have our engineer look at those four-way stops to determine if they warranted four-way stops. So we received a report back for the intersection of Byard and Hillendale Road. Our engineer feels that the site distance cannot be increased, so a four-way stop is warranted. Byard and Hillendale, where they just took down all the trees.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At Rosedale and Byard, they recommended doing short-term, mid-term, and long-term improvements, which are provided in Panoni's traffic study from two thousand nine, to try to enhance this site distance. If they don't work, then a four-way stop will be warranted. East Hillendale and McFarland, it was recommended that the site distance cannot be increased due to the vertical alignment of the road, and therefore, a four-way stop is recommended. And the last intersection was Woodward and Norway. They recommend that we enhance the signage and pavement markings at the intersection and reduce the vegetation at the northwest corner and see if that helps with the site distance for now. So if the supervisors agree with these recommendations, we have to create an ordinance which has to be adopted to permit the four-way stops.
Do you need, do you need a resolution to that effect?
I need a motion to create the ordinance.
So moved for the two-stop signs on Hillendale.
A second.
Okay. May, may I ask a question? Do you need, in that resolution, that motion, do you need anything about taking action to increase the site distances and marking the road? In other words, the other two intersection question, do you need that included in the motion?
No, we can just do that. I have to look back at the Panoni study to see what they suggest for the Rosedale and Byard. I think it says that some of the vegetation needs to be cut back, and we might have to make some changes to the road, but.
I think they had to elevate Byard a little bit so that it's easier to see, but also faster to get out potentially. I'd also like to try to, well, I'll make other comments after we deal with those two, if we're going to do a stop sign.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just curious, Lisa, you're talking Byard and Rosedale. I mean, I, there's been some pretty serious accidents there, and there's, they're short, I forgot what you said. Short, mid-term, and.
Long-term recommendations.
I guess a four-way stop must be very expensive. Is that?
No. No, it just stops the flow, the continual flow of traffic, but it's not expensive at all. I was going to pull up the report and see what these recommendations are.
I mean, I don't know what vegetation or road changes you would make at that intersection, but it would seem to me that a four-way stop would be good to have.
The four-way stop would be with the intention of, I think from a practical point of view, what happens is that somebody comes to the intersection with a stop sign and assumes that the person coming on the cross side has a stop sign too, and so the person who has stopped the stop sign says, I did my duty, now I go. And the other person doesn't have a stop sign, so all of a sudden, you've got two people occupying the same space. And particularly at that intersection, I was almost in a T-bone in exactly those circumstances. And as I talked about it in relation to this, it was pointed out by the chief and others that that's typical kind of problem. And it was one that was also happening at Rosedale and McFarland also previously, where people couldn't see, and so they were pulling out on, on McFarland and into the middle of the intersection, another person coming across.
Yeah.
So because of, the site distance is one problem, so can you see far enough to do it? And that's enough to raise the question, do we put up stop signs? The other one is, how do we slow down the traffic so the traffic is more concerned about everything that's going on around it, so that, that there's not an improper assumption about whether traffic will stop or not? Does that get to what you were concerned about?
Well, I guess I was thinking that changing vegetation, I don't know what vegetation at that specific interaction you, because that's right close to me, you would change.
Trees, if you're.
There aren't any trees there.
If you stop heading toward, if you stop at Byard, you stop at the intersection, and you're going towards Route One. If you turn to the right, there's a lot of trees up there. Those the trees?
Chief, now, we're talking about if you're, if you're traveling towards Route One, you're sitting on Byard, you're traveling at Route One. One of the things the engineer suggested, if you look further towards Kennet Square, you'll see a row of evergreen trees that are right at.
So you're looking to the west.
Yes. The other, probably the other trees are on certain daytime conditions, if they look once to those trees, they may not see a dark colored car.
I see.
You have the opportunity, you should look the second time, and if motorists don't, then they pull out right in front of the car. That's the other type of accidents. But a four-way stop has to be justified under the state's guidelines. And because there are other improvements that could be made at Rosedale and Byard, the engineer said you need to make those improvements, they thought you need to make those improvements first.
They can tell you what they are. They suggested warning signs along Rosedale about crossroad, advisory of the speed, make sure the crossroad signs are appropriate distance from Byard to ensure the motorists have adequate advance notice, warning signs along Byard that the cross-traffic does not stop, regulatory signs, consider sign enhancements such as oversized stop signs, guide signs, which they, they suggested removing the existing street name pole and replace it with a street name sign, which is, Pendot recommends that. Pavement markings so that there's stop bars on Byard. They said consider a double yellow center line and white edge line through the intersection. That was the short term.
We've done some of those, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then for the roadway, they said to consider improving the corner radi of the intersection, remove vegetation embankments or other obstructions. Cut back, they show a picture of overhang vegetation.
Okay, I understand.
It goes over for a while.
I'd also like to try to, also when you're coming down Rosedale, it's downhill, and I suspect Roger's done a good job with a smooth road once you get down to the flat. And, you know, I just wonder if there's some way that we can at least get the traffic to slow down or give some warnings.
Yeah.
To sort of slow down when you approach that intersection.
Especially after they pave next week. I'll talk to Roger about that. Bill?
Some of the things you mentioned from that report, as have already been done, Richard left, mentioned at the last meeting that there is a thirty-five mile per hour sign or a slowdown sign there that is very small, and it should be bigger, but, and I know you can't use stop signs for a traffic, what do they call it, traffic calming? I guess there's some type of regulation about that, but there are a lot of speeders on that road. And, and that makes it dangerous at that intersection, even though going the other way, from what the chief said, I think there are good site distances from, if I'm going down Byard. But still, sometimes you misjudge the speed of the other car coming down that road.
Maybe we'll look at oversized signs and.
And you can't use speed bumps, I guess, on the township, right?
Correct.
That's correct. That's correct.
But there is a sign that says, you know, cross-traffic doesn't stop.
Right.
You know, because I know there's been so many accidents there, and I'm usually going away from Route One. You know, tells me, be careful when you approach this intersection.
Right.
But, you know, just like down by the Menahal Inn, nobody follows the speed limit down there. I mean, I don't know what you're going to do besides have little dwarfs hanging in the sky to catch them.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
There's one standing back there right now. There he is.
Come on, little dwarf.
There's numerous places in the township that people complain. Research indicates that, yes, there is a problem. There's not enough of us.
Well, we can do, yeah.
Not enough of us.
Right.
Because we also have township community issues that we have to deal with, too.
Okay. It strikes me that most of the suggestions that Lisa had pointed out in the short-term solutions are very low cost. And it sounds very practical to try to implement those before anything else is done.
Most of them have been done. We're going to try and.
And most of them have been done. Most of them have.
So we're going to take the engineer's important.
Excellent.
See if it goes further.
Excellent.
Okay. If there is no further discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No days, passes. Thank you. It gets us to new business, so we need to pay bills. Do we have a motion to that effect? So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-fourteen dash twelve. Before we get into that, Lisa, can you explain to us what ag security is?
Yes. We have an agriculture security area, and what it is, it correlates with the county's ag security, and anyone with ten acres or more can put their property in ag security and receive a tax deduction. So currently, did that explain it well?
Oh, yes, yes, I do.
Currently, we have, in Kennet Township, we have one thousand five hundred and thirty-four point eleven acres in ag security. And this resolution tonight is to add another ten acres in for Alonzo and Alonzo, Lou Marson, and LCM Mar Enterprises. No, I'm sorry, what's wrong? I don't know why that came into town. That was them before. It's for Phillips mushrooms for eleven acres. On Kalem Road and Old Kennet Road, they're contiguous parcels, both owned by Phillips. So whenever anybody wants to add their property into ag security, they have to apply to the county and to the township. Once the county approves the addition, they send us notification that they approved it. And then we have to adopt the resolution, which then has to be recorded to officially enter that, those parcels in the ag security.
Is that reversible or permanent?
It's reversible, but if they reverse it, they have to pay the back taxes.
Good question. Question. These acres are concurrent with existing ag security.
Acres?
No.
No.
They're not. Yes. Now, Phillips has other property in ag security, but they don't have to all connect as long as there's ten acres together.
Yes, love.
Yeah. Clarification, you said it was a tax deduction. I think it's a tax reduction as a result of a different rate.
Default. It's definitely deferred because ultimately they would have to be paid if it's violated.
Yeah, three nineteen.
But during the time it's in ag security, they have.
A lower.
Lower tax rate.
Net tax. It's not deduction, it's just a formula, they pay a lower tax.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So is there a motion that we adopt this resolution twenty-fourteen dash twelve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm in favor as well. Good. All right, the next item is, thank you. Ordinance number two-two-three, which is stormwater MS four. And this deals with the runoff requirements for, that are virtually mandated to all municipalities. I'm looking at this, the document itself is just short of a hundred pages long.
True.
Thanks.
So I'm assuming.
Please don't worry.
We're not going to read this. Now our engineer did.
This is, this is to meet the requirements that are currently in place. It comes out of the federal government, filters down through the state and to the local municipalities, to the county and municipalities. So, let me see here. It's a very technical, general provisions, definitions, stormwater management standards, stormwater management site plan requirements, performance and inspection of regulated activities, and final as built plans, fees and expenses, operation and maintenance responsibilities and easements, prohibitions, enforcements, and penalties, and then four appendices. So it's, it's a pretty comprehensive. Do we have a motion that we adopt it? Move we adopt ordinance two-twenty-three?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. How does this affect any budget category that the township has for, you know, addressing all the requirements in this ordinance? Where are the dollars going to come from?
They are unfunded. It's a unfunded mandate. So this year, every year, we just budget an amount that we think that we might need to do all the inspections, meet all the requirements, and that money has to come out of the general fund.
So currently, it's not budgeted in this fiscal year?
Oh, it is.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, we've been budgeting every year for MS four.
It's possibly the responsibility that we have when we do this. It's required of us. Any further questions?
These are new regs that you now have to.
I'm sorry?
Are these new regulations that, that apply to storm water management? This is new? Or is it just, just a recap of what we've already been doing?
It's updated. It's an updating.
It's updated, so.
It's continually being tightened and tightened and tightened so that, that the stormwater management within the municipality is current with the requirements that apply to all municipalities.
Okay. So we, so there is pending, I think, at the Miller's Hill development. So certainly, they, I assume that they're, they were, they're familiar with what's being updated. Or do we tell them, or is that part of the discussion when they, when they present the proposal, if indeed a proposal is coming?
The engineer will review that with them when they apply with the PC.
Okay. Okay. And just a thought, because there's a master plan on, on the Ensign Nixon Park, and it identifies some problems. So to the future, as far as water management for the development at Miller's, on Miller's Lane. It just that, it seems that there's new regs and, okay. Okay. It's gonna be addressed then.
Our engineers will make sure that anything that is put in there will meet the new standards.
Okay.
It's, it's not a flippant thing. We've spent a great deal of time and money over many years to address these things, and we will continue to do so. Any other, yes?
Do I understand that the stormwater management regs at the, what is it? We have federal, state, and county levels that you're complying with?
They filter down from the feds all the way down to the municipalities.
This ordinance is from the state DEP?
Right. And they're not, they're not grandfathered, is that correct?
Correct.
So these stormwater management regulations, how are they filtered? I understand that affect, you know, somebody buying a lot, or a developer, or whatever?
Correct.
It applies to that, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible to get a copy of that?
Yes.
Or is it online?
It's online, under ordinances.
Okay.
And if you, if you scroll down to the, they're all in the narrative order.
Okay.
223.
Thank you.
This, but this ordinance pretty much was a model from DEP, and then every municipality is required to adopt it and amend it to meet your municipality's needs.
Were there any other hands? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
As am I. So this passes as well. Lord have mercy. Okay. So that gets us to trail regulations. And, so I'm trying to put my hands on here. Okay. So, thank you. Ordinance number 224, an ordinance amending the Kennet Township Code of Ordinances to Establish Regulations for Use of Trails in Kennet Township, Including the Designation of Prohibited Activities, To Establish Penalties for Violations of Such Regulations, To Protect the Interests of Land Owners, And to Preserve and Protect the Health, Safety, and Welfare of Kennet Township and its Residents. Now, this has been before the board previously, and so now we're, we're going to enact it.
And the Trails and Sidewalk Committee also reviewed this ordinance.
I was going to make an announcement about that, but why don't you tell everybody about that committee? It's, it's new and whatever.
We have a new Trails and Sidewalk Committee. They met on Monday, and that was their first meeting. Their job is to, or their task is to help create new trails, sidewalks, assist in trails and sidewalks that are already in the works, and give the supervisors guidance on new trails and sidewalks. So when we met on Monday, they reviewed the ordinance. They also reviewed the trails policy. And then they also reviewed a possible easement that's coming up, that the supervisors will discuss at their October 1 meeting.
Good. Thank you.
Ms. George?
Yes. Since a number of the trails involve the borough of Kennet, is there a provision to coordinate with the borough as well?
Yes. Yes. The trails, the trails that are in place have already been coordinated with the borough. But any future trails that connect with the borough system, absolutely.
I mean, the ordinance and its provisions.
Oh.
Technically, technically, no.
Not for trails, we did not.
The ordinance, the ordinance is only enforceable in Kennet Township.
Understand.
Now, that doesn't rule out going to the borough now and saying, "Hey, look what we adopted. Would you consider something similar?"
I'm suggesting maybe a handshake agreement, or some provision to handshake between the borough and the township.
That's something Lisa can follow.
Absolutely.
But technically, the ordinance is just Kennet Township.
Understand.
May I have a motion that we adopt?
Oh, you got a hand over here, sir.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. On the...
You're so shy over there.
On the trails, is there, in the ordinance, or gonna be with the new committee, like mile markers? I look at it as the fire department, so if we get an injured person that we're not walking all over the place, so, that there's a, some kind of marker, so like a mile, a mile and a half, so that we could...
That's a good point.
To find them. And I think it works for both the fire department and the police department.
That, we, that has been discussed numerous times, that that should be done. That, the way that it is going to work, from what I understand, is each trail segment that's put in, those provisions we put on that trail segment. This ordinance does not affect trails that are already in place. This only talks about you can't have motor vehicles on there, you can't have your dogs on there without a leash, those types of things. So, in order to get mile markers on all the existing trails, that's something that the supervisors need to require, but it's not something that would go in this ordinance. This is pretty much telling you what you can't do.
It's more general as well. It's, it's setting up provisions for what people in general expect for trails. But certainly, that's a good suggestion, particularly from the perspective of the police department, or the fire department. If you get a report that somebody has fallen and broken a leg, and you need to go and get them, you'd like to know where you were going, and out in the middle of the boondocks, it might be hard to be able to describe them. Turn left at the second beech tree might be not helpful. So thank you for that suggestion. Okay. Now is the time for a motion?
I'm gonna read a motion. I'm moving, adopt ordinance 224.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
So, I guess I just had a question. So did the Trails Committee have any suggestions about the ordinance, or anything?
No. Well, the only thing was that people should clean up after their pets. And that's in there. And we also have separate ordinance about that.
Okay. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Passes. Thank you. We need to adopt the proposed trail easement policy as well. This, the ordinance creates the legalities, the policy sets the way it's going to be put into effect. And as, as everyone is aware, these things become alive. They continue to, to grow, and certain things we discover are not practical, and so they go away, and certain things need to be expanded, such as mile markers, or tenth of a mile markers even, and so they get added on. And so, they're alive as they evolve. And the evolution starts off with the ordinance, and then the trail easement policy. So we would like to adopt this tonight as well. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion about it? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Thank you. The next, the next matter is the MMO Pension Plan. Lisa, would you like to talk to us about that?
Every year, by the end of September, I have to let the supervisors know what our obligation is for our pension plan. This is for the township employees, and it's, up until this past year, it was fully funded by the township. Now employees have the option to contribute towards it as well. So for 2015, the expected cost is $81,631. That will be offset by the state aid that we receive, which is usually approximately For 2014, the township had to pay out $69,061, and our offset will be $24,000. The reason for the increase is because, starting this year, we have to start paying towards the amount that's unfunded because of when PMRS, which is our pension, they call it Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System, they change their interest rate assumptions, which changes the policy. So each year, they tell you what you have to pay towards that amount.
Is there anything that you need formally adopted tonight?
No. I just have to notify you what it is.
Okay.
Bill?
Just wondering, you said employees can contribute to the plan. Is the township going to match the contribution in some form?
Now, this plan, the township already pays the employees' contribution, a set amount. It's a calculated amount. In addition to that, the employees can contribute up to 10% of their salary.
And without any match from the township?
No, because it, really, the township is matching it in a sense. Because the township's contributing, you have to pay a certain percentage for each employee.
Okay. So this is not a 401K?
No. It's a state pension plan.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
The interest rate assumptions? I'm curious in what they were, and what they are now. I know they've come down quite a bit. Hopefully, it's going up.
Well, let's see. I, I don't have the interest rates here. I can get them through PMRS. I don't have them right here.
They're set by the state?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. But that's led to a lot of unfunded pensions, because we're not earning the same amount now, nor should we in the future. So, it is, I think it's an appropriate question to ask, and be prepared for more unfunded if it is, still remains high, higher than supervisors think is appropriate.
Well, we can't control it.
I didn't say that.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
I'm just saying prepare for, you know, contingent liability, or whatever you call it.
To the extent that there's any unfunding, it is at the part of the state.
I'm well aware.
It's not at the part of the township.
I'm well aware.
And, and to that point, I wanted to also, this is not on the agenda, but it's an appropriate place to throw it in. I received a compliance audit report from the Commonwealth Department of the Auditor General, which I'm pleased to note is signed by the governor. Kennet Township Non-Uniformed Pension Plan for Chester County, Pennsylvania, for the period January 1, 2011, to December 31, 2013, is dated September 2014. And just like our, our annual audit that we do for the books here, this is done by the state for our pension. And if you, if you'll put up with my intentions here, I want to read just a little bit of it to you, so you know what it involves and what was done. Township officials are responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal controls to provide reasonable assurance that the Kennet Township Non-Uniformed Pension Plan is administered in compliance with applicable state laws, regulations, contracts, administrative procedures, and local ordinances and policies. In conducting our audit, and that's the Department of the Auditor General, we obtained an understanding of the township's internal controls as they relate to the township's compliance with those requirements, and that we considered to be significant within the context of our audit objectives, and assessed whether those significant controls were properly designed and implemented. Additionally, we tested transactions, assessed official actions, performed analytical procedures, and interviewed selected officials to provide reasonable assurance of detecting instances of noncompliance with legal and regulatory requirements, or noncompliance with provisions of contracts, administrative procedures, and local ordinances and policies that are significant within the context of the audit objectives. The results of our tests indicated that, in all significant respects, the Kennet Township Non-Uniformed Pension Plan was administered in compliance with applicable state laws, regulations, contracts, administrative procedures, and local ordinances and policies. And there's more that precedes it, and there's more that follows it. If anybody wants to see it, it's available. But in context with what Lisa had just announced regarding the MMO Pension Plan, I thought it was important to call attention to that as well.
And with that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. George Swine. I think that's something that perhaps should be placed on the website.
I can do that.
Thank you. I agree.
Because the press is obviously left by now.
I can do that. I wanted to say that what happens out of that, they let you know what stress level you are, and we're a 1, which is very low, but that requires me to talk to PMRS to ask them what we should do to fund our unfunded balance. And PMRS, their suggestion is each year, just pay the amount they tell us to pay, not pay a lump sum, which some townships do. They pay a lump sum to fund that. But PMRS suggests not to, because their rates could change.
Yes, Lisa, Scott, that begs the question. Are you obligated or to pay what they tell you to pay, or do you have a decision to not pay it?
No, you're obligated.
You're obligated, okay. MMO stands for Minimum Municipal Obligation.
You're obligated.
Okay. So you could pay more than that's the lump sum you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
There's no action required for either of these two items, but the suggestions are noted, and you expect to be able to read the whole thing soon on the line. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Public Works Director, Roadmaster, job title, well, not job, it's job title and obligations, responsibilities, is, is being redefined. And I'm assuming we need to adopt this as well.
We, yes, we do.
By motion.
Yes. The Roadmaster, he's technically not just a Roadmaster. He's a Public Works Director.
Public what?
Works Director. And a Roadmaster. So he's in charge of sewer, stormwater, everything beyond the roads that he's responsible for. Budgets for the roads, administrative work for the roads. So it, we felt that it was appropriate to change his title so that it is correct with his job. And if you look in most other townships, there's a Public Works Director slash Roadmaster, or just a Public Works Director, but normally not just a Roadmaster. So we're just changing, we're correcting his title. So he's called the Public Works Director and Roadmaster. You can call him whatever you want.
I hope he gave a raise.
And I'd be nervous that we're talking about Roger.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Roger Lyle, sorry.
I'm just looking through here, and, and on, partly down page 4 of 4, single-spaced, "Physical and mental demands." Under "Mental demands," "Work occasionally involves responding to angry or upset individuals." You've been in this township long enough, you probably understand what that means.
Have to put it in there.
Yep. Okay. May we have a, a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Second.
Before we vote, is there any discussion by supervisors?
No, he's been doing this kind of work for a while, so.
Indeed, yes.
I have to recognize it. There's been more and more sewer work, and as we also saw today, certainly more and more were. more runoff work going on.
Yes.
Just as a concerned citizen, I think he's done an excellent job. He has.
Thank you. He has.
Yes.
We'll pass that on to him.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed. Good. Thank you. Which then takes us to the Roadwork Current Activities Report.
And I'll tell you what he's been doing. The intersection of Bayard and East Hillendale Road was finished, removing the trees and the tree stumps, and grading the bank. And that was to improve the site distance. There will be trees that are planted much further back from the road, and there's a split rail fence that's going up. A township resident donated the fence, put it back up there.
It's up.
It's up now. Okay, that's good. We announced last month that we were going to trade in two dump trucks, and the dealership was only going to give us $3,500 for each truck. We sold them both on Municipa bid, which is a bidding website just for municipalities. One for $6,500, and the other for $9,460.
Not bad.
Yeah. We like that website.
Yeah.
There were three trees down this month. One fell on a power line, which caught the lines on fire. The bridge deck on Old Kennet Road broke loose. This is a Pendott Bridge, and Pendott was called, and they fixed it. Base repair has been done on several roads that will be paved later this month. Cedarwood and Milkwood and Whitetail are all being paved this week. Next week is Bayard Road from East Marlborough Township Line to Rosedale Road will be paved. It will take three days. An island was removed out of Clifton Drive to allow for safer entry and exit. On Bayard Road, they cut trees back and pulled the shoulders to allow for a new surface to be installed. Also, manhole risers were ordered to raise valve boxes and sewer manholes before paving. Inlet repair was done at Captain Robinson Drive and Buckter Road, which was a total rebuild. There are custom-built inlets, and, oh, and they're precast, so they're very time-consuming. As I said, or I told you earlier about the maintenance garage gate. The township road crew did work overtime to assist with the mushroom festival and the parade. And the trail crossing at Hillendale Road, and, right by the Hillendale Bridge near Channings Mill Road, that trail crossing's been closed for quite some time. It was, finally, we raised the landing on each side of the trail, on each side of Hillendale Road, so that there's now site distance, so that the cars can see the people and vice versa. We ordered signs that will be put up, warning, the cars and pedestrians will have flashing lights on there as well. So, finally, the trail will be opened again.
I think that's probably a good thing, and I think Roger ended up doing it for less than what our engineers thought it was going to be also, just to...
Yes. We were given an estimate of around $40,000 or something, different estimates, but the road crew worked with, paved excavating, provided all the material, paved it, the work, and it cost about $4,000. Roger has the solar lights that will be put on top of the warning signs. And the property owner there is happy with the improvements as well.
Good. And people can act a little bit more safely.
Yeah. Chief McCarthy's going to say something, I think.
Yes, sir.
Can I just point out something that occurred over the weekend, that you may have heard the Borough thank Roger and myself for having their water main break? Well, that started because there are customers in the township of the Borough's water system. So, calls started to come into the county about, why don't I have any water? A little investigation, the Kennet Square Police were tied up. We found a water main break. And then, I started to realize Roger was also going to start getting calls. So, I called him and said, hey, you're going to start getting calls about 2011. He said, I'm here. Now, on Yorkland Road 82, because there was an accident at the, right at the line where a 14-year-old girl took her father's brand-new Mercedes, took a pole down, and they couldn't get a hold of Pendott to close the road. Roger basically did him a favor, like he always does, and took traffic control down there. And then, he came up to where I was at Leake and assisted the Borough Works Police Department, or Borough Works Department. But it's, that's a general. It's something that normally occurs, where they, it's a team effort, and I just thought I explained to you why we were basically in there. But he was already here, so.
And then, when we found out about the break, actually, Albert let me know about the break Sunday morning before the Borough, and then, we notified all of our residents via the mass email system. Unfortunately, I don't have, I don't know exactly which residents on Borough water or not. I know the area where they are, but some could be on Chester Water, and some could be on Borough. So, we just let them know that if they are on Borough water...
Don't drink it.
But unfortunately, a lot of people didn't know which water system they were on. So, but fortunately, it was lifted today, and now, everybody can drink the water.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. I'm on water. I did get a call from the Borough, but it came in on my phone ID as unknown. I don't usually answer calls that are unknown. Now, that just might be me, but I don't think it is. So, if my, I may be known to Borough, but I don't know what township policy is as far as phone notification. If it comes up unknown, I don't know how many people are going to pick it up.
I agree with you, because I wouldn't pick it up either. And we don't do phone calls. What the Borough did was a reverse 911 call, correct?
Correct.
And that's why it came up as unknown. I can tell you that the other, we send out the mass emails. We put it on the website, which I did. We also send it out through Ready Notify. And today, the Borough also sent it out through Ready Notify, letting people know that the boil and water notice was lifted. But if you sign up for Ready Notify, that also, we also post road closings on there, flooded roads, issues in storms, and they will, you can either get an email, you can get a text, and it comes up as Ready Notify. That's the way we do it. We do not do phone calls.
I will point out one more thing to the Board, the board that I just learned. The notice the boil did not mean the water was contaminated. That's a state regulation that says, any time the water flow is stopped in a water system, the water has to be tested 12 hours from the event, and not sooner than 12 hours again. So, that's pretty much why that occurred. But chlorination, they upped the chlorination because the main was open. That's another regulation, so it might not taste that well. But I haven't had a chance to talk to Lisa about this in our weekly meeting, but we're going to develop a better system, so we know who is on the Borough, and we can notify that in the event something happens in the future.
And just to give you further information, the Borough had to drain their entire system. And then, they had to fill it back up slowly with their well. They said that, because I know some residents received phone calls from Chester Water, letting them know not to drink their water as well, because the Borough's system and Chester Water's, where they meet, I think is near where the break was. And then, the Borough could have had Chester Water fill the system up for them quickly with their water, but they were concerned there still could be a break. So, it took some time to fill it up, so people had low water pressure.
So, other thing that we might learn is that, I did go on the website of the Borough, and they had a little blurb saying that there's a break. It seems like it's the southern part of the municipality, and is, and is, and will not affect the entire Borough. And that stayed on there forever. So, my only point is that, when you continually update your website on alerts, that it would be really helpful, because that's a great way to communicate.
I had it up there Sunday morning, and it's still up there right now. I haven't taken it down yet. But that alert is up there.
And because it was by email and other email-related systems, that gives you a much more quickly and targeted kind of message, rather than passively putting it up on the screen. And if you wake up on Sunday morning and you're feeling a mite under the weather because of Saturday night, you may not turn on your website and start cruising around right away. But if you got an email, you're probably going to get that sooner.
But we try to do it every way that we can.
Yeah. And hats off to you, because I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
No.
So, how many, how are we doing on collecting email addresses of residents?
We have 769.
So, that's about 10%.
Well, as far as per household, it might be more.
Well, yeah, because...
And that wasn't critical.
No.
I think that Bob raised the question that we need to keep striving to get...
We do, but I don't think it's 10%, because we have 2,500 households. So, I don't know.
Probably closer to 25% of reach.
Right. And then, we have, we had, I think, 16 bounce backs this time.
You're always going to get that, yeah.
And I had a couple people call and yell at me that they didn't receive the water notice, because they signed up for the email list, and we never sent them anything. And I'm able to search and look at that person, and you can see every notice that that person sent, and they unsubscribed themselves. You can see, you can see when they opened, everything they received, everything, which is really nice. Well, thank Bill. I care for setting that up.
One last thing. The unknown is what they call reverse 911. That comes from the county. So, and reverse 911 is to the point where as we can isolate a certain area of the township and say, send this notice out to these households.
But Chief, was it reverse 911, or did they just dial every 444 prefix?
No, it's a reverse...
No, it's a reverse 911.
It's reverse 911. It comes by address.
So, they did all of Kennet Borough and Kennet Township?
Okay.
Not the whole township.
Right. Not the ones that live there.
Yeah, but what percent of the township has no email?
Right. Or phones? I don't know.
Yeah.
Because the people that have Borough water are surrounding the Borough.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion is that you can also send an email as a text to somebody's phone. For Verizon, it's yourphonenumber@vtext.com. And so, as long as your subject has, you know, the information in the first, you know, say, 100 characters, that will come onto their cell phone as well, and then, they can know to go to your website.
Yeah, that's a good idea. If everybody wants to use the phone numbers, we'll do a mass text. Happy to do that.
No, your system is very, very good.
Thank you. But I do urge everybody to sign up for that Ready Notify, because that's good, because you can sign up for other, you can sign up for Borough notifications, county notifications, which is really great. School notifications, if you have school kids.
Where do you go for that?
Ready Notify PA. And you can receive the alerts via text, email, both.
Thunderstorms, flooding potential...
Weather, yeah. Whatever you want.
But Lisa, that will put you on a business.
It might.
She should be so lucky.
It might.
Ready notified PA.org.
I'll tell you.
I'll try. Or the county.
I'll tell you.
Dot org.
Dot org? Okay.
So, to best of my knowledge, that completes our agenda for tonight. Are there any? We have to hear from you finally, is that it? Any other public comments?
I got a quick one. I know Keoland Road is a state road, but have they notified us, and they're going to do something besides having it be a linear gravel pit?
You mean when they'll go back and sweep it?
Anything. I mean, they...
Well, their next step is they'll go back and sweep it, because what they did is oil and shit.
I know.
So, they have to wait two weeks.
Okay.
That's the process, normally.
Any update on Channings Mill Bridge? Any outstanding engineering reports, committee reports, anything that's being waited on, or it's the next step?
Apparently, the road count for round here onto Keoland has just been completed. I have not seen the numbers.
You'll have it tomorrow.
I'm sorry?
We'll email it to you tomorrow.
Yeah. Beyond that, everything is continuing to, trying to think, Brew.
I have one update on it. Dave Sander and I are attending a meeting Monday with the county representatives, not the county commissioners, just the staff. And John Crum from the FHWA, who is the funding source for the whole Channings Mill Bridge project for the county, and Sid New from Pendott will be there, and they're going to talk to us about all the different funding options for the bridge, talk about the monies that have already been spent on the bridge, and I think that's pretty much what we know, but we're going Monday to meet with them.
Right.
So, on the dollars and cents side, you're doing that, but there's also the safety issues. Has that evolved and advanced any further on that?
We did receive the safety report, and we received a report from the Land Conservancy Advisory Committee, which I will post both reports online.
Since it was brought up, am I, is it, did I hear correctly that the county will allow a one-way, they'll pay for a one-way bridge as a solution? Is that part of the opportunities that you're looking at?
That's what we understand. They would do that.
Okay. That would solve the emergency vehicles coming from Avondale and Pocassen, as well as the concern about financial resources coming from the township quite a bit.
If the county put in a one-lane, one-way bridge?
Yeah.
It's one option.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, maybe by October 1st, maybe we'll have some more information.
Stay tuned.
But as soon as the supervisors decide to take a vote on this bridge, we will put out public notification. I'm busy now. I'll put it online. I'll probably put it in the paper.
Meet at the red flag.
Right. I will make sure it's out there as much as it can be.
So, sign up for the website for that, if not, emergency access to what notification.
Do we have executive session tonight? Are we done?
No, but we can go home.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
We do.
I do believe it's time.
Submerge.
Oh, I have. I see where you're going.